Welcome. It's seven o'clock, February 5th, 2024 Troy City Council meeting. My name is William Rosell, President, and tonight's invocation and pledge leading is by Mr. Bobby Phelps. Please stand.
Please bow your head. Our heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come into this arena with the public service that we love so dear and take to heart. There are many folks in our community that have special needs and some families that I'm particularly thinking of that really need our community's prayers tonight to support not only the person with the illness, but the families that are dealing with it. We thank you for surrounding our community with your love and healing powers. Please allow us to do our duty to the best of our ability. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One reminder I have forgotten the last week, couple of weeks. Any cell phones, please turn them on, vibrate or off during the meeting. Thank you. All right. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Wooden?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mrs. Sne?
Here.
Mr. Schilling? Mr. Seibert?
Move to excuse Mr. Schilling and Mr. Seibert.
Individually.
Yes, they're individually.
Individually?
Yes.
Move to excuse Mr. Seibert.
Give him a second.
Motion to excuse Mr. Seibert by Mr. Pierce, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Please call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert is excused.
Motion to excuse Mr. Schilling.
Say it again.
Motion to excuse Mr. Schilling by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Please call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling is excused.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Knight, could you please read the summary of the January 16th minutes of City Council?
Yes, recycling.
We have an award first, don't we?
I want to keep an eye on your turnip heads up there. This is our first quarter recycling award winner, so goodbye, one piece. And I have to run back and print out your comments because I think they want to add to it, so. You said, "We want to reduce the amount of trash going into the Way to Go and recycling requires less new materials to be needed." Thank you very much for participating in the community recycling program. Karen is a friend of mine from several years ago, and I don't get to speak to her very often, so when we saw your name was the winner, I was like, "Oh, I'll give it to you." And I appreciate you too. Thank you very much. Karen said that you were the main one who does the recycling, so I'll give it to you. She did car for someone, she's living alone. From the recycler, one piece picked up, the car is one of the restaurants. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Rob, you want a photo? Now, Mrs. Knight, would you please read the summary of the January 16th City Council minutes?
Minutes of Council, January 16th, committee reports. Buildings and Utilities Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing advertising proposals related to the valve replacement project at the wastewater treatment plant. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared to release mortgage liens for property at 115 East Water as loan has been paid in full. Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing the implementation of a three-month deferral of loan payments at principal and interest for the 18 Act of Business Loan Agreements within the historical district. Law and Ordinance Committee recommended ordinance number, ordinance section 521.07, fences not be included in an exemption for the international property maintenance code. Committee recommended legislation be prepared adopting the 2024 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for contracts at Duke Park concessions. Personnel Committee reported regarding approvals of reappointments to the CIC, the Human Relations Commission recommended by the mayor, and those were approved. Resolution Number R2 2024, concessions at Paul G. Duke Park, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R3 2024, deferring loan payments was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R4 2024, advertising for proposals related to the water, wastewater treatment plant, I'm sorry, the water treatment plant valve replacement project, which was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance Number O2 2024, releasing mortgage liens, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O3 2024, adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code with some exceptions was given first reading, discussed and adopted. There was a presentation from the Miami Conservancy District following various comments, Council during 8:21 PM.
Thank you very much.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Say it again. Motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We move on to committee reports. We have a few tonight. We'll start with Building and Utilities Committee, Mr. Pierce.
This committee met January 29th to consider the authorizing bidding for Hobart Arena dehumidifier replacement project. The current units have been in place for approximately 20 years, have exceeded the useful lifespan for such equipment, and have become unreliable. This project was included in the 2024 budget. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into the contract for the Hobart Arena dehumidifier replacement project at a cost not to exceed $450,000. Respectfully submitted by Councilman Phillips, Councilwoman Let's Sne, and myself as Chair, Samuel Pierce.
Any questions on that report?
Yep, I have one. With the new units, will there be energy savings related to it obviously being more modern is the first question. Number two is, is there additional costs for electrical or any upgrades that need to be done to have a newer unit to be installed?
So we would expect that all things, all other things being equal, that there would be energy savings, given that the current standards are much tighter than 20 years ago. However, depends on how often they have to be used, how often the facility is having to be used, et cetera, so that's a variable. As far as electrical and other upgrades, there's nothing other out of the ordinary that would be required during installation of any new units. We don't have to do any major modifications, and the new units will fit in the area and with the piping, et cetera, generally as part of the bid specs.
That would be included in that 450?
It would have been included in the 450 because those are the bid specs and the engineer's estimates.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to personnel, and they have three reports tonight. Mrs. Sne?
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met January 29th to consider a Program Year 2023 Led Safe Ohio Program Partnership Agreement between Miami County, Pickwa, and Troy. The city would be eligible to receive $204,150 of the county's allocation, which includes $18,000 for general administration. Funds would be dispersed as a grant to qualified applicants for work identified by the program. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a Program Year 2023 Led Safe Ohio Program Partnership Agreement with Miami County and the city of Pickwa. This committee supports emergency legislation as all program funds are to be obligated by June 1st, 2024. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Pierce, and myself as Chair.
Anyone have any questions on that?
This committee met January 29th to consider an agreement with the law firm of Jackson Lewis P.C. for collective bargaining-related services, which firm has provided the service for several years. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a professional service agreement with Jackson Lewis P.C. for collective bargaining representation for the coming contract period. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Pierce, and myself as Chair.
Any questions? Please continue.
And finally, this committee met January 29th to consider notwithstanding legislation for a Troy Main Street Incorporated event, April 7th, 2024, and a Troy Truck Yard event, April 8th, 2024, related to the 2024 total solar eclipse. The eclipse will occur the afternoon of April 8th. Events are planned for April 7th and 8th, with the public square closed from approximately noon on April 7th through approximately 6:00 PM on April 8th. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the notwithstanding legislation associated with the 2024 total solar eclipse and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Troy Main Street Incorporated related to the 2024 total solar eclipse. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Pierce, and myself as Chair.
Any questions on that? Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Sne, as well as Personnel Committee for your extra work on the extra assignments. We've come to this committee input, comments, if you have on any of the committee reports or agenda items tonight. If you do, please come to the podium, state your name and address for Mrs. Knight, and you have two minutes to voice whatever you choose to voice on those topics. Seeing none, we will move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, could you please read R5 2024?
Resolution Number R5 2024, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Hobart Arena dehumidifier replacement project, cost not to exceed $450,000, first reading.
Need to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Wooden, seconded by Mrs. Sne. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes. Move to adopt. Second.
Move to, motion to, motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution R6 2024?
Resolution Number R6 2024, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to employ counsel for the purposes of negotiations, collective bargaining services. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend the rule.
Second. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Wooden. Please call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolu-, Resolution R74 2024?
Resolution Number R7 2024, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio to enter into the PY 2023 Led Safe Ohio Program Partnership Agreement by and between the Board of Miami County Commissioners, the city of Pickwa, Ohio, and the city of Troy, Ohio, for the Ohio Department of Development, ODOD, Led Safe Ohio, LSO, program and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mrs. Sne. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Sne, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
We have one ordinance tonight. Mrs. Knight, could you please read ordinance O4 2024?
Resol-, I'm sorry, ordinance number O4 2024, ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for events related to the 2024 solar, total solar eclipse, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Ohio, of the Troy codified ordinances, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Troy Main Street, Inc. This is the first reading for the events of April 7th, 2024, and April 8th, 2024.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Wooden. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Wooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That concludes our business. Communications announcements, Mrs. Knight?
Only to remind you about the filing of financial disclosure statements, that's all I have.
Mayor, do you have any?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Tidderton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of brief ones. February 19th is President's Day, that's a Monday, we will be off, I believe that's also a normal council meeting, so that'll be on Tuesday night. Refugees and recycling will be picked up as normal. The second item is, is last year, we, at the suggestion of one of our audience members, we began to publish approved budget snapshots. We have, the Auditor's Office has closed the books for 2023, so we are working on those. Had hoped to have them out by now, but hopefully by the end of the week, we will have the same two, two sets of charts and pie graphs as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Chuck DeBlau, Mr. Kreber?
Mr. President, I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
Auditor, Mr. Friggy?
And Mr. President, I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Any council members? Mr. Wooden?
I know it's almost been three weeks, and it was a relatively minor event, but I thought the street crews did an excellent job in this minor snowstorm we had since our last meeting, so I commend them for the great job they did there.
Mr. Phillips?
We're going to report a topic. Do we have a date on Dimehill Road opening?
I'm sure we do, I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head, I believe it's early April.
I know the people are.
You've been doing a lot of work?
I was planning on. It's warm.
People are thinking about it.
That's right. Anyone else? Staff? That gets us to the audience. If anybody has any comments, same instructions, podium, name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Council President Rosell. Welcome to the big chair first of all. My name is Bradley Burner, I live at 105 Crestwood Drive, and I am a proud member of the New Carlisle Church of the Brethren and the worldwide denomination known as the Church of the Brethren. And I'm here tonight because of something that is near and dear to my heart, which I would like to issue an invitation to anyone within the sound of my voice to. And it is out of a process that started, squealing there, in 2022, when a discussion topic came before our annual meeting about people, standing with people of color and racism. It was a query that was put forth by our district, which is Southern Ohio and Kentucky, and it was adopted, and the conference at that time issued a statement which I'd like to share with council because it's something that is near and dear to my heart with my work on the Juneteenth Committee and also with this process. I recently undertook facilitator training for seven prompts for crucial conversations on racial justice, so I'd like to share this statement. It comes from the Church of the Brethren Annual Conference. "We recognize the struggles faced by many of our sisters and brothers of color and believe that the church should be agents of change. We encourage congregations, districts, agencies, and other denominational entities to continue to follow the teachings of Jesus by living out the Great Commandment of loving our neighbor as ourselves. We understand that the great diversity that the word neighbor implies. So we encourage congregations to study the teachings of Jesus and how they apply to our relationships with all people of color to express solidarity with all people of color, offer sanctuary from all forms of violence, and identify and dismantle racism and other oppressions in ourselves and in our institutions, and then begin to live out those findings by being Jesus in the neighborhood." Now, why do I say this? It's very important to me that we recognize that while we may not know it, we sometimes have implicit biases within ourselves. I know sometimes I do, and I don't even realize it. But the one thing that my work on the Juneteenth Committee of recent years has taught me is that all people matter. All people matter, we must respect our neighbors, whether they be black, white, or whatever. And I'm not saying anybody in here does this, but I just think it's important for me as both a community member and a Christian man to take this outside the church and into the communities. And to that end, on the 24th of February, as part of Black History Month, I will be doing a workshop on seven crucial prompts for conversations about racial justice at 11:00 AM at the Randolph McCullough Freedom Struggle Complex in Pickwa. And I'd like to invite anybody who would like to go on this journey, it'll be about a three-hour journey, and it's an inward look at ourselves, answering some questions about ourselves and our relationships with people of color. And I encourage any of you to go through that because you might find some things out that you didn't know, some biases that you might have that you didn't know. So I encourage you to do that, to join that, and I'm hoping to have one here in Troy later on in the spring and summer. But for right now, the one I'm doing will be in Pickwa, and you're all invited to that. Secondly, and this is something also I just wondered about. I don't know if any of you read the recent Civic Capacity Newsletter that Bill Lutz puts out, and I think it's a very good newsletter. Some while ago, he wrote about our board and committee process. I hate to be a negative nanny on this, but I'm going to be a little bit. I think our committee appointment process is ripe for reform. We recently had two openings on planning permission come up for reappointment. Four good applicants that apparently never got a look. Two appointments were remade, and they've been on this committee for years. My question to the mayor is if we're going to be about transparency, you have this online process. Do you ever look at those applications when they're submitted? You had four good applicants, apparently none, not a one of them got a look. You just reappointed two members. So are you looking at those applications, Mayor?
Do I have to answer? I mean, I'm not on.
It's your appointments, Mayor. They're your appointments. So if you're not looking at that process, if you're not looking, they're your appointments. So if you are not looking at that process, why do we have it? And the second question I have is we have a Personnel Committee, we have a Personnel Committee. We very rarely hear from them, except we've heard a few things tonight. I'd kind of like to know, Mrs. Sne, what the Personnel Committee does. Can you explain the workings of the Personnel Committee and what they do?
What any other committee does, look at any items that are assigned to us by the President of Council.
Well, it seems to me, it seems to me that the Personnel Committee, and maybe this is something you ought to take a look at, Mr. Council President, ought to have more of a say in this appointment process, because it seems to me that the mayor makes the appointments.
Mr. Burner, they are mayoral appointments.
Correct, so why don't, if they're mayoral appointments, what does the Personnel Committee have?
Some appointments need to be approved by council.
Right.
Some do not.
But wouldn't you, wouldn't you think that for better transparency, all appointments should go through the Personnel Committee, be vetted, fully vetted, and be approved by council? It just opens, it is more of a transparency issue. We have an online application process that apparently isn't even getting used. So if it's not getting used, the question is, why do we have it?
Those are valid questions?
And that's just questions I have.
Okay.
That's just questions I have.
All right.
And that, I'm not, I'm not trying to be confrontive, I'm not trying to be confrontive, I'm just, there's questions that I have had about the, I've had this about the process for a while now, and reading Mr. Lutz's newsletter just brought those to the forefront again.
Okay.
So those are just my questions, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Ben Southely, Troy Historic Preservation Alliance, 110 and 1/2 West Main Street. Just wanted to give the council an update on the stabilization work that's happening at IOF Building, Old Miami County Courthouse on West Main Street. Give you, break this into three parts. I'll give you a quick overview of what's happened since my last report three weeks ago, a fundraising update, and then just a little bit of info on Black History Month since we're into that now. So we submitted our permitting plans last Tuesday, January 30th, that will outline the scope of the stabilization work that will be happening at the building in the spring. We anticipate hearing back from the Miami County Building Department and the Independent Plans Examiner by next Monday, February 12th, and anticipate that construction will begin soon afterward, later this month, with the intent of meeting the April 30th deadline. As far as fundraising goes, our goal is $750,000. We are currently at 60% of that goal. We have received 100 private pledges and donations so far, and continue to beat the bushes hard. We're entering the final stages of fundraising here in February, and those wishing to donate can go to our website at www.thpatroy.org. Regarding Black History Month, I wanted to thank the city of Troy and the Human Relations Commission for its creation of the brochure highlighting African-American historical points of interest in the downtown. We're grateful that the city of Troy included the Old Miami County Courthouse in the brochure. As many of you are aware, that Old Miami County Courthouse is associated with the Randolph Free People. These nearly 400 formerly enslaved individuals represent the largest single migration of African-Americans to a free state prior to the Civil War, and their journey ended here in Miami County, so a pretty significant event in national and state and local history. For those individuals, many of whose descendants still call Miami County home today, the county courthouse was a stop on their journey in 1846. courthouse was a stop on their journey in eighteen forty six from the plantation in Roanoke, Virginia, that they had formerly called home. Under Ohio's black laws prior to eighteen forty nine, if you were black and wanted to settle in Ohio, you had to register at the courthouse in the county in which you wanted to reside. In Ohio, the clerk of the Common Police Court was responsible for enforcing the black laws. In fact, the old clerk's ledger in which nearly four hundred of the Randolph Free People registered survives to this day and is in the archives at Wright State University. We're really excited to report that through research, we were able to pinpoint the exact location of the clerk's office within the old courthouse, and we are pleased to share with council that we've determined conclusively that a large part of the clerk's office does remain intact to this day. And it's pretty powerful to stand in that spot and think about the Randolph Free People being registered at that very spot. How long has it been now? About nearly one hundred and eighty years ago now. We will continue to keep you updated on the status of the stabilization work. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions?
Mr. Southely? Plans are submitting to Miami County Engineers' Office, if those are approved, that is what they're saying, you need to do, and if you do these, then you, the building would be taped at that point.
Correct, that, those plans outline the scope of the stabilization work, and so it won't address everything, will eventually come before the city, work with the Planning and Development Department on code violation issues associated with the building, things like broken windows, but the scope of this work that has to be done by the end of April is stabilization work, so primarily to the roof, some to the walls, much of it invisible to the public, but nevertheless important work. Sure. Any other questions? If not, continue to put the invitation out there, if anybody would like a hard hat tour of the building, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Southely. Anyone else?
My name's Paula Hemrick, I live at forty three seventy five Horseshoe Bend Road. We, we are six weeks into the two thousand and twenty four election. Soon will be deluged of political ads produced by special interest groups. The ads will be filled with half-truths, outright lies, they will demonetize the political opponents. The ads will come from both the left and the right, lots of money will go into making them. We don't know the identity of the big donors or their true agenda. What we really know, because it, we have seen it in the past, is that the big donors will have a louder voice over public policy than you and I. And our elected representatives are likely to be more accountable to those big donors than to us. Is this any way to run a democracy republican, republic? I don't think so. Our current situation had been, our current situation has been decades in the making. It began in eighteen eighty six, when the U.S. Court Supreme Court decided a corporation was a person with constitutional rights. Ninety years later, the court ruled that the spending money was the same as free speech. And fourteen years ago, on January twenty first, two thousand and ten, the court opened floodgates of big money into political campaign with a five to four decision in Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission. We need to stem the tide of big money in politics, we need to make clear constitutional rights belong to the flesh and blood people only. To make these two things happen, we need a constitutional amendment. There's always a proposed, there's already a proposed amendment in Congress for this purpose. It's We the People Amendment, House Joint Resolution Fifty Four. It already has seventy seven sponsors, co-sponsors. I call on my fellow citizens to learn more and to take action. Watch a five minute minute video, why we need the We the People Amendment, you can find it on YouTube. Sign the proposed amendment, sign the petition at move to amend dot org slash motion. Call Representatives Davidson and Carey, ask them to sponsor H R, H J R fifty four. Then call J.D. Vance and Sherret Brown, urge them to introduce a companion resolution in the Senate. We need to elect representatives who are genuinely accountable to we the people, not just the special interest groups, large corporations and the ultra wealthy. We need the We the People Amendment. It is important, nonpartisan first step to restore our democracy, democracy republican. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We are adjourned.